Good evening, everyone. It is 6:30, so we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Mr. Cusick, if you will please perform roll call.
Mrs. Best.
Present.
Mrs. Davis.
Present.
Mrs. Epling Skinner.
Present.
Ms. Harless.
Present.
Mrs. Hudson.
Present. Thank you. Welcome to our March 11th Worthington Board of Education meeting. My name is Nikki Hudson. I have the privilege and pleasure of serving this year as our board president. To my far left is Board Vice President Kelly Davis, Board Member Amber Epling Skinner, our treasurer TJ Cusick. To my right Superintendent Dr. Bowers, Board Member Stephanie Harless, and Board Member Jennifer Best. If you'll please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That brings us to the approval of the agenda. I don't believe there have been any changes or corrections, so may I have a motion to approve the agenda as published for today's meeting? So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments? Would you please call for the vote?
Mrs. Best.
Yes.
Mrs. Davis.
Yes.
Mrs. Epling Skinner.
Yes.
Ms. Harless.
Yes.
Mrs. Hudson.
Yes.
Motion carries. This brings us to one of our favorite parts of board meetings, when we're able to recognize either students or staff or the administration, and tonight is recognition of Brian Genius. If I could receive a motion to recognize Brian for receiving the 2024 ITIP Ohio Ignite Just looking to see, I want to state that this award recognizes educators who use technology to help ignite the fire, spark creativity, and excite learners to think outside the box through meaningful educational technology integration. So moved.
Second.
Would you please call for the vote?
Mrs. Davis.
Yes.
Mrs. Epling Skinner.
Yes.
Ms. Harless.
Yes.
Mrs. Hudson.
Yes.
Mrs. Best.
Yes. And the motion, of course, carries. Excellent, I'll pass it off to Kelly.
Okay, this is my moment to shine until Brian gets to shine. So hopefully you can hear me. I'm supposed to hold this close so that, come on up, Brian. I'm so excited. So I am excited to present, oh. This recognition on behalf of the board. So Brian is our curriculum leader for science, health, and physical education, and he is receiving this exceptional achievement for the ITIP Ohio Ignite Award, which I think Nikki said. The Ignite Award is given away every year by the Instructional Technology Integration Partnership. The award recognizes educators who use technology to help ignite the fire in teachers and students. So this is a prestigious honor and serves as a testament to Mr. Genius' unwavering dedication to leveraging technology, to ignite energy, and cultivate success for both students and staff. Okay. So I first met Brian a number of years ago at Curriculum Liaison Council meeting, and so I just knew then, like, he loves science and technology, and he loves to create enthusiasm around it. So I'm not surprised that he was nominated for this and ultimately selected. So throughout his career, Brian has consistently demonstrated a profound commitment to innovation and excellence in education. His tireless efforts have not only transformed the learning experiences of our students, but have also inspired and empowered his colleagues to embrace technology as a powerful tool for educational advancement. So he was nominated by some amazing team members from our AAPL team, the administrative staff, that include Kathy Montag, Sue Withers, bear with me, Kyle Sarver, Cathy Rebel, and Diana Wesley. So this nomination also included an outstanding recommendation letter by Kelly Weckley, which I got to read, which was lovely. The team nominated Brian because he created tools that have streamlined important processes, resulted in more efficient turnaround, clear communication, I love that, and has really created a culture of collaboration. They feed off of each other's energy, and they're not just in silos, they're doing it as a team, and you have led that. So it's created a positive and productive work environment, which empowers all of you, I'm sure empowers you, but mostly empowers our students. So please join us in congratulating Mr. Brian Genius on this remarkable achievement. His ability to ignite the fire, spark creativity, and excite our learners to change the world truly embodies the spirit of the Ignite Award. So congratulations.
Let me make sure this is okay with Trent, because... Thank you very much, that was a very nice statement, I appreciate that, and Kelly, all that you've done for Worthington as well. One thing, I'd like to thank a couple of my teammates that took the time out of this beautiful evening to say their support for me. So Kathy and Diana, could you guys just stand up a little bit? The one person also I really need to thank is Angie Adrian, who's not able to be here today. She actually inspired me to reach out to our team and to make certain that we are fully supporting one another and that we're creating some pathways for a little more technology success in what we do on a daily basis in the academic achievement and professional learning. So I wanted to thank Angie as well, and especially Kelly for helping lead us in all those endeavors as well. So, thank you very much. Oh, wait, I really have a long dinner if I didn't also thank my beautiful wife. That was close. That was really close. Actually, she really deserves a lot of thanks because probably on a nightly basis she hears, "Hey, I got this idea." Thank you, man, I love you very much, so, thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Phone on, it's going to be hard to top that for the rest of our evening. We will move on to visitor comments, and seeing as Vicki is going to hand out who has signed up, I will go ahead and read the section of our agenda to make sure that we're all aligned on expectations during this section. The school board and administrative staff encourage and appreciate community interest in meetings of the Board of Education. This section of the agenda is designed to hear views of community members about their schools and items on the agenda. Each speaker will be asked to address the board at the visitor's podium so that the speaker's remarks may be clearly heard. The speaker should give their name and street address and limit the comments to a maximum of five minutes. We remind all speakers that our district values and respects all people as they are and that our district is committed to creating and maintaining safe spaces for all of our students and community members. We want to remind our community that we value public input and always appreciate when our community members remember our district's values, refraining from using harmful or offensive language, and for sharing your comments in a civil and respectful manner. It is not our usual practice to respond to remarks during the visitor's comment section of our meeting. And with that, the first... That brings us to Section C of our agenda, and we tonight receive an update on the naderatorium. Looks like Superintendent, Assistant Superintendent, Mr. Randy Banks is going to start us off. Thanks, Randy.
Very good. So tonight is the third installment of our construction update, and it may be the smallest project, but it is certainly an exciting component to the entire project overall. My role has been the last several presentations is to specifically talk about how our community and our students will be impacted with the project. So I plan to kick us off this evening with a little on impact, and then I'll let Mike talk about the specifics. This first slide should look familiar to you. It shows the site at Thomas Worthington, and at our last Thomas Worthington presentation, we discussed that area in red. So that's behind the current school, and currently it serves as a cut-through, it also serves as parent drop-off and pickup, and that's going to be closed all the way to where the baseball field is. You see that, kind of that long red area moving to the west, that's going to be closed off, and we discussed that and how that will impact the entire site. We've addressed that loss of staff parking with the orange temporary parking in the front, as well as the parallel parking across the front of the school, and then you'll see that banned practice area, which is a huge component that currently is in the back of the school as well. So those things we've addressed in the previous presentations. I would like to draw your attention to the blue section, that is our current student parking lot, and you notice that it's going to be just a little bit smaller with the start of the naderatorium project. That red band at the top will be where they have their construction trailer and they store construction equipment that is working on the pool. So we're going to lose that part of the parking lot. I'm going to flip to this slide, next slide, and then I'll come back. Here we go, this slide. I give our construction team a lot of credit because before they made that decision, they actually did some drone counts, drone counts of student parking. So this slide was taken in November, and we anticipate that the student, the number of students that drive to school increases as the school year progresses because they're getting their driver's license, parents are getting brave enough to actually hand them the keys, and they're showing up at school. And the other thing we realized about this site is that students are constantly coming and going, so it's an active site. So they've done the counts, and they believe that with the temporary parking up front for staff, recognizing that some of our staff will have to park in this lot, that we can lose those 20 spots to the far left, as well as half of that 41, and they'll take some of that green space there on the far left of that project to set up. So we're comfortable with parking for school. The biggest impact when it comes to parking is for events, and we can't sugarcoat this. If you picture a Friday night football game and you look at that view, you know what it's going to look like. And that's considering people have been able to park behind the school, and they've been able to take advantage of other parking. So that temporary parking in the front will help us, but we are going to have to be creative with how we house our teams. We've talked with Molly about beginning to brainstorm ideas. The one good thing about the site is because we won't have an auditorium, there should be very few evenings where we have competing events on-site. So the arts and the music programs won't be having large performances at the same time the athletics are having large events. So we hope to eliminate some of that, but I can't sugarcoat this, for large events, the parking is going to be a challenge, and how we communicate with our own fans, our own teams, and our opponent will matter through this next phase. But this is, I just showed this slide to show you that there's actually been some studying done before they came up with this location. If I go back to this picture, I want to point out that the area that they are laying down the equipment is obviously further north, the construction zone is down at the far-left corner, which means at certain points during the day, there could be construction traffic from red to red, and that's concerning because that's a student entrance and exit throughout the day. So they have studied student traffic patterns, they're aware of our safety concerns, and they will work around that as best as possible, but there could be a point in day when a piece of equipment is moving from the north to the south, that we're going to have to temporarily close that drive for two, three minutes for them to go back and forth. So it's important that you know that that could happen, but it's also important to know that we've studied that. There's a lot of things that have gone into that decision that doesn't impact other athletics and other activities and kind of keeps it out of the way. So the entire administration of Thomas Worthington was involved in that decision. Go to some of the positive here. We are going to be able to build a pool on-site and keep the current pool open. So when we talk about impact, it's important to recognize that a lot of work went into making sure that we didn't disturb the current naderatorium, as well as the current pools. If you get too close to some of those outdoor pools and you start digging, there's a chance that some of those could be in danger. So our team feels confident that this location will work, and it will allow us to have a pool that is open throughout the season. Again, we've met with them, we've coordinated large events, they're aware of target dates and things that we have to work around. I do want to point out that you see this beautiful tree-lined boulevard, that's been pushed to next summer, so we'll talk about that, but there is some utility work that's going to be done on that front sidewalk of the pool. So there will be a time this summer when that kind of main front entrance of our outdoor pool will be out of commission because they'll be working there. So it's important that we take note of that. Again, we've had good communication with the team at the pool, they're aware of this, and we have their important dates, and our team's aware of that. So I think we're making great progress there. So overall, I think the takeaway when we talk about impact is we have to be safe with construction equipment when students are in session, we have to communicate regarding large events, and we have to recognize that we are building a community asset without losing any of the current assets. And so with that, I'm going to let Mike talk about the details of the pool and some of the amazing things that are going to occur.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. So, schedules first. This is looking really good in the schedule. You heard Randy say, "At no point in time will we have the old naderatorium offline until the new naderatorium is ready," and the good news is the new naderatorium is ready in August of '25, and there is on this schedule near the bottom, a two-weekend swim invitational that, I double-checked with Matt, absolutely, it'll be open. So we're looking at, you know, having a brand-new naderatorium in place in the fall of '25. So that's just a year project. And again, it is something that sits inside the Thomas Worthington site work and all the work that's happening there, it doesn't extend it. It is exactly, you know, this summer through next summer that we'll be seeing that pool construction happen. And then obviously the demolition of the naderatorium, the old naderatorium, and the installation of the new parking lot will be the last thing that happens by the end of '25. So it's a much easier project, and obviously helped tremendously by the fact that the other pool remains active and remains available to swimmers. I grew up as a competitive swimmer, age 18 to age, or age 8 to age 18, and my history and my high school years were always remembered by the fact that we had to do 5:30 a.m. practices and 9:30 p.m. practices because we didn't have a pool at Tullawanda High School. We used Miami's pools, and the only time they let us use them is when nobody else wanted to use them, and that's how I remember it. So it's a wonderful thing that you guys have a pool in your district. I always remembered St. X in Upper Arlington and Canton McKinley as the three places that you went for big meets, but this pool now will be up there with any pool in the state of Ohio, and that's fantastic. The one change we made when we went from the existing pool to imagining a budget for a new pool was we assumed we would go to eight competitive lanes, and we would have similar program spaces to the current naderatorium, albeit, you know, larger for the eight-lane pool. What we ended up with was a 10-lane pool, and I will spend a little time trying to explain that tonight. It provides so much flexibility and so many different kinds of uses and so many supports to so many of the teams that exist in Worthington, and even simultaneous use in some really creative ways. And the coaches had a lot to say in terms of how that worked. I think I speak for them when they are thrilled, imagining going from where they are to where they will be, especially in the time and availability of space in the pool. So this was the first sort of concept image of a 10-lane pool. You can see the first two lanes are a little bit site-compromised, but those are not competitive lanes. There are eight competitive lanes beyond that first two. Those first two lanes are shallower water, that is for a lot of good reasons, it's for training, it's for warm-up, it's for having swim lessons for kids who are scared of deep water, but the competitive pool is just like Cleveland State was when they first put the deep pool, first deep pool in Ohio when I was a swimmer, it is 100% deep water. That means the ability to swim fast times and the ability to swim in calm water is tremendous. So we started with the eight competitive lanes plus two practice lanes, got the 10-lane pool going. Let's look a little bit at the site plan, I'll come back to the rest of the pool. We, and Randy talked about this too, we tucked the new pool up against the bottom of the naderatorium and up against the side of the outdoor pools, and again, Rusili, to their credit, they went out and they looked at different construction methods for making that a safe. methods for making that a safe construction. We were going to have to put piles in to make sure that neither of the pools would sort of drain themselves into our excavation. So we moved the nadatorium further away, not because we couldn't do the piles, but because we had the space to do it, and it gave us a lot more safety and a lot less construction cost. So there was a big savings that they brought to the table by giving ourselves a little space from the existing nadatorium and a little space from the outdoor pools. The future of that site is a lot more flexible now because that decision was made and influenced by Rusili. So the building, as we know, we're in Worthington, we're in the ADRB's mix. We just had, had a complicated, you know, review and approval of the complicated design of Thomas, and we just kept going on kind of the same note, same brick, same detail, same sort of architectural style. And we worked through several iterations with the design review board. And Nathan, who did both designs, you know, just finally found the sweet spot with them, and again, fantastic design. And in fact, for all the impression of, of the new Thomas, the first thing you're going to see as you drive off 315 is going to be the nadatorium. Now Nathan's image is pretty creative there. You can just see the cupola of the high school as you, as you come up to this point. But the first building in Worthington schools that you're going to see off one, on 161 is going to be the nadatorium. And then, you know, obviously the icing on the cake with Thomas. The north side of the building is the, the public entrance, it's the new parking lot. It has stairs that access the, the upper level deck of the upper pools. And there isn't even an access door to the student training room that might get used depending on how people want to control the access to this building. There's daylight throughout, there's daylight in the training room, there's daylight in the pool. But we have, I think, a very pleasant design and a very big upgrade from the sort of pre-engineered metal building that the original nadatorium was made of. This is up at the upper pool level. Again, there's handicap access up at this level. We thought we could avoid an elevator by having this upper access and the lower access. They were distant enough that it became impractical to do that. So we ended up with a lift in the building, so we have full handicap access throughout, even though we have site access at both levels. So here's the plan, obviously, 80% of the square footage of this program is pool and pool deck. Something that we started with was a goal of having a 20-foot pool deck around this pool. We still have 20 foot at the ends of the lanes, and we have about 18 feet on the sides and eight feet on the south end. We were struggling with budget and we made some balances. But we had a lot of input from the coaches and a lot of input from Kurt Carmen at Swim Inc., who gave us a lot of ideas in terms of how to balance our, our values and how to balance our, our choices in terms of staying within budget and getting the most flexible pool. We have walk-through locker rooms that feed both the student training room and the pool. We have separate storage areas for Swim Inc. and this district for team storage. They share storage now, and it gets confused and it gets lost. And so we, we gave, gave each organization their own storage. There's a large conference room, in fact, I can blow this up. There's a large conference room for meet management, there's a separate room for pool management, there are public restrooms and public unisex restrooms. And as I said, we ended up with a lift that gets us up to the spectator level. The spectator level has 368 seats. That's really similar to the new Upper Arlington pool, if you've seen it. A lot of the design, we made sure we were thinking about the things they were thinking about. There are also 100 seats, like there are today at the pool, in tip-and-roll bleachers for the participants in the events. But it's going to be easy to keep participants and spectators separate, given the design of the upper mezzanine as the, as the view. So as you walk in, pretty simple building, nothing flashy, obviously identifying who we are. This is the first all-Worthington project I've worked on, so I wore my Thomas tie and my Kilborn shirt tonight because it is, it is both. And this is, you know, this is the shot. The pool is 100 feet by 75 feet. It's, it's massive, and it's great. And the flexibility that we, I learned about, and I was a swimmer, but the flexibility I learned about from Kurt and others is the depth profiles of the pool. Again, as I said, we have an eight-lane competitive pool in all deep water. We have an eight-lane, parallel water polo course, all in deep water. That's something you've never had in this district. We have two lanes that are in transitional depth or low depth, and that is for training and warm-ups. We have diving that's in deep water. And so we've given ourselves all kinds of flexibility in terms of how to use this pool, given the additional surface. The real, the real creativity here is the depth profiles. We have a lot of deep water here. And again, we worked really hard to figure out how to keep that in budget. This is just a line I was playing around with, with the coaches. You can have five lanes of swim practice, a half-course of water polo and diving practice at the same time. There's nothing like that in the current pool. You can't do any of those things simultaneously. And so this doesn't mean this is how you will do it. You will probably have water polo practice in a full course, you'll probably have swim practice in a full course. But in, in a pinch, there will be opportunities for you to be able to do all these things, even actually carve off two lanes to have swim lessons going on, or community rec lanes going on while there's, there's deep water swimming for the, for the varsity teams. So very flexible pool, really good outcome. A lot of people, a lot of smart people had a lot of influence on this. It wasn't us, the architects, it was all the users of, of pools. Just a few more shots. You can see from the end of the pool more by the diving well. There's a huge integrated time system with the pool and a huge video display board. Again, everything that you see at Upper Arlington, you will see it at Worthington. And so we're happy about that. There's a crow's nest that's up in the top, above our heads here. You can see this is from the competition end where the starting blocks are. This is from the end of the pool where the spectator, or the, the participants sit at the low end. And this is up at spectator level and up at the crow's nest level, where you can see the starting blocks and run the timing system from up here. Last thing is very interesting, I remember this when I was growing up, no lights over the water. It's bad for backstrokes, which I was one of, but it was also hard to change light bulbs if you have to, you do it from a boat. So this is all lit from uplights that go around the perimeter of the pool and create a very even foot candle, you know, lighting level around the entire pool, as you can see, very calm, very even, and it's very good for swimming, especially for backstrokes and for people who have to change light bulbs. So I'll stop there and let you guys have some questions.
Thanks, Mike. If you guys are okay, I'll, I only have a few, and then we'll go around. Excellent. I know you mentioned the fact that there is natural light coming in, and I also know that there are limited windows. I know that's intentional in anticipation of potentially some public questions about that. Do you mind going ahead and explaining why?
Yeah, and Upper Arlington made the decision to put, you know, a, a whole glass wall, a whole curtain wall at the, a south end of the pool. And I think there are going to be times where that is going to have an impact on activities in the water. We were trying to deal with ADRB and not do curtain wall, they wanted a more traditional look. And so we had that piece coming at us from the exterior side. But from the interior side, much like gyms, we want diffuse light, so we were careful about the placement of windows and the direction orientation of windows. So again, you're not swimming in sunlight like you would not be playing basketball in sunlight if you were trying to get natural light into those kinds of spaces. So it was pretty thoughtful, but it was also pretty limited, but I think we found a good, a good compromise.
Excellent, thank you. Just want to express gratitude and also, I mean, you mentioned it several times, but collaboration requires two collabor, multiple collaborative parties, right? So it's not just a matter of the fact that you guys sought and received input from very smart individuals, as you refer to them, but it's also that you listened and that you took that input. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's excellent and product, and really excited for the asset that it will be for our entire school district and our community.
Agreed.
So anyone like to, would anyone like to go next? Okay, Kelly.
So I'm getting a text, sorry. Relevant to the conversation, though. Hold on just a second. So my question was for parking. Where'd Randy go? There you are. So parking, this is going to be done in fall of '25, and it's going to be the new hot thing. Everyone's going to want to go to Worthington because we're going to be so fancy and special, right? And so, but construction is still going to be going on at Thomas, and are we looking at in 20, fall of '25, football season, and how is the parking situation? It's going to be a little better because now we won't have that lay-down area?
Correct.
Okay.
So the good news is by fall of '25, a lot of this area is going to come back. The blue and the reds and the lay-down area and the new parking lot that's right adjacent to the nadatorium, they'll start to come back online. We won't necessarily recap that north area where the softball field goes, but we will be getting most of the west side of the site back in normal operation because the pool will be done, and the work to the south and the work to the west will be done. And our new boulevard will be done, so we have much better traffic. So all those things will come together by fall of '25. It is the '24, '25 school year that we're going to have the most challenges.
Okay. You talked about the parking too, I'm sorry, I'm going to focus on parking, I don't know why, but for students coming and going throughout the day and those periods of time when the construction materials are going to need to be transported. So is there going to be signage? You know, you see those people standing on the street that says, "Slow, stop." Like, is, is there going to be clear signage for students to, it'd be good practice for them, I guess, to know when to stop?
And, and some cones and some, you know, strips where we'll say at certain times, we're going to have this lane closed because we're expecting a delivery, things like that. And if you, you notice when the fieldhouse was built, you know, Rusili did a good job of having fence definitions and cones, and, and it changed. And it obviously got really good on Friday nights because they pulled everything away so that it was the best it could be for a game. So those kind of things will still continue.
Okay. You went over accessibility, I did have a question as you were talking, but that's good that you were able to put something inside and outside so that the building can be accessible. And have we have, have we had a conversation, you talked about this last time, I think, I just want to remember and clarify, outside organizations, other tournaments that are going to want to come in during this time about maybe limited use because of the parking situation that's going to happen? Again, parking, I don't know why I'm fixated.
Right. Well, again, when everything's done, you know, it will be all back in business. But yeah, until we're done with Thomas, having a lot of outside, you know, events at the nadatorium will be tricky. It won't be impossible, it'll just be tricky.
Okay. That's it, I'll get back to your question. And looking at the swim families too, hopefully we're answering everything. If not, make sure you send us a email. Thank you. So I do appreciate you including families, people who are swimmers. I love that you are a swimmer, so that you can give feedback to that. And I know that Kurt has had a tremendous amount of input.
Encyclopedia.
With all of this. And I'm, I am really excited to, to attend there. But thank you for all your work.
Thanks, Kelly. Amber, would you like to go next?
Sure. I will echo what everyone else is saying about, you know, listening to the experts who are involved in this, and the fact that you're a swimmer too, is, you know, just really gives you that lens to look at because as a mother of a swimmer with Swim Inc., I've been to a lot of nadatoriums, although really not that many. When we think about how many are in central Ohio, this is going to really set us apart. This is huge. You referenced Upper Arlington, and I mean, that's to me, you know, kind of the gold standard. You walk in there and your jaw just drops at that building, and you're saying that ours is going to.
Right there.
Be right up there with it.
Right there.
So my swimmer is going to be so thrilled that there's going to be a big, like, television monitor like they have and everything. So it's just, this is, this is a huge deal for the district. The questions I had, Kelly addressed several with parking, you know, Friday nights I know are always tough for Friday night practices because you've got the football games going on, and then there is a parking lot, it looks like, though, that is maybe closer to the nadatorium?
For the first time, maybe even dedicated. So if I'm a Kilborn high school student and a swimmer, there's a place I know that I'm going to to park. Instead of saying that wherever I can find a space in the large Thomas lot is where I park, you can, I think during swim team season, you can dedicate that parking lot after school to swimmers. So again, their, their expectations when they arrive onsite are, I know where I'm going to park.
Because that's, that's always, and even a safety issue too, because my daughter started swimming when she was, what, about nine? And having her cross that street.
Exactly.
She's older now, so it's not as, but it's, it is kind of scary for the little ones, right?
This helps all that.
Right, so that's great, that's great that it's going to have a designated parking area, and that will help on Friday nights for sure. The seating capacity, you said that this one has 368 seats in the upper mezzanine?
Yes.
How does that compare to what we have now?
You have 175 seats.
What does Upper Arlington have?
There, it's about the same.
About that, okay.
About 350.
I mean, it's always cramped when you have an invitational, but that's, you know, just, it is what it is, that's a swim.
They have their whole high school connected, but we have that large team room, and there's going to be, you know, video simulcasting in there. Kids can mimic that, the clerk of course, where they can sit, you know, and hang out with their teams because you have that huge room, high ceiling, and it's minute, you know, steps from the pool. And right next to that meet management room where you will walk by and check in for your event. So I, I think it, it actually has advantages over Upper Arlington in that it is a self-contained and it has some space to support the pool that isn't just the gym or the high school or, or the hallway or the cafeteria, it's actually a swim training room.
You talked about the natural light, and I know that we have brought this up with the other two buildings too, but LEED certification, is that something that this building is?
Yeah, it's part of, I, I don't know if it's part of Thomas's certification or if it's by, by itself. Okay. So yes, it's a new building, we can, we can get LEED silver easily.
Oh, great.
I don't know how the swimming technology, we have a desert air system that captures heat out of the water and the air. All those kind of things are great points, are great things for LEED points, so, and great things for cost of managing a pool.
Yeah. I think those are all the questions I had. I just, I'm really excited about this, and I just think this is really, really setting us apart in central Ohio especially. Thank you, thank you for all your work.
Excellent, thanks, Amber. Stephanie, would you like to go next?
Sure. All my questions are answered, so this is quick. I do want to thank you for being here for the third meeting in a row.
No problem.
And walking us through everything in a really comprehensive way. So, so thank you very much for that. I echo like the idea that we're going to have dedicated parking is really great. Everybody knows that that's the challenge over there. And it's a big deal that you're going to keep everything online, and we're always going to have a pool available.
It's huge.
So, so thank you for that, and, and again, thank you for all your hard work.
Again, thank you for working with the community and everyone on this. It's helped make it a really great project. My questions also had to do with parking, I think, because that's one of our biggest concerns during the construction time, so we all think about it. But my only other parking question, the new parking lot, is that where the current nadatorium is?
Exactly.
That'll come down and that's.
Exactly where that pool sits.
And how many spaces?
It's not a lot, like 29 spaces, but it's enough for swim teams to have a place to go. And, and now the convenience of parking right at the top of the nadatorium are gone, the new boulevard is there, so that's not going to be swim team parking ever. So it, it's now, you know, it's now closer, but it's also more dedicated, so it has two advantages.
Thanks, that's all I have.
Wonderful. Mike, thanks again to you and your team and Rusili. Thank you. Excellent. That brings us to C2 in our agenda, which is the first reading of the 2025-26 school calendar, and Randy will join us for that as well.
So tonight, we'd like to present one of our calendar options for the first reading. And to review, in Worthington, we collect input from a variety of stakeholders as to what the calendar should look like, and we make a strong attempt to try to give our community advanced notice as to what that calendar will look like so they can plan around that, should there be vacation or graduation or any of those types of things. So tonight, we have presented three options to our administrators, our teachers, our classified employees, and our community. And I'm grateful to announce that they've all agreed on their top choice because it makes this presentation so much easier. But basically, the, the components of that calendar really align with a later spring break. So what, what seemed to speak in the voting was that our staff and our community wanted a later, like, end of March, early April spring break, which is what really separated option B from the other two. We did have an option that aligned with the Ohio State University, which years ago was kind of a priority for many people in our community, that they felt like that there would be an advantage to our school district aligning with the university. However, that, that was not the choice. So tonight, we are bringing forward option B. And again, those options were created based on input from our community, from our teachers' association, as well as our classified employees. So it would be our intent to have a first reading this evening, and then take, collect input between now and the next meeting, and then get this calendar out on our website[1766.08] input between now and the next meeting and then get this calendar out on our website so that our community can be aware and make the appropriate plans. But any questions about the process or the actual selection? We've shared these calendars, they've been online. Yes?
My quick question is, so where will this be housed in the meantime, between now and when you bring it back again to present to us for a vote? Where can the community and teacher staff look to see what option was the most popular?
Very good. I'll work with Vicki and Dawn to house it on the website, but it will be proposed. And we'll make sure that we label that appropriately so that they know that it's not approved. Good question, though.
Thank you.
Do we have a graduation date?
No, I said graduation and I, those were dependent upon the venue. And our team does a fantastic job of getting first in line, but as of late, that happens no more than 365 days in advance.
I know. There's parents that want to know.
But yeah, the other dates, planning around, knowing, and again, we've had a very consistent calendar. We start in mid-August. We try to get out before the holiday weekend in May. And I feel like we've gotten some momentum with that, that people have adjusted well. There is a new feature that will appear next year's calendar that we do have kind of that mid-winter long weekend. So it's a four-day weekend. And that was part of our negotiations and recognition of the parent-teacher conferences that will occur in February. So we'll try that out next year. This calendar will follow that. And if we need to make adjustments, we'll do so in the next calendar.
Excellent. Any other questions? Okay. Excellent. Thank you. All right. Dr. Bowers, that brings us to the superintendent's report.
Great. Thank you. So our mission in Worthington is to empower community of learners who will change the world. Well, we work to do that through four vision statements. So our first is we will engage each student with diverse opportunities to maximize every student's potential. Tomorrow, Tuesday, March 12th, Worthington High School students will administer the ACT to all 11th grade students during the school day. So this ACT administration is free to all 11th grade students. All juniors have been automatically enrolled to take the test. Lynnworth Academy and Half Day DACC students will take the test at their home school, so their home high school, Thomas Worthington or Worthington Kilborn. In order to provide focus time and attention to the ACT, the morning will be dedicated to testing only. So all 11th grade students are reporting to school tomorrow morning at their normal start time, 8:40 a.m. for testing, but we're using a delayed start for our ninth, 10th and 12th grade students. Lunch is available and then classes begin at 12:55 tomorrow. So ACT for our juniors tomorrow. Everybody else starts at 12:55. High school students, everybody else. Ninth, 10th, 12th grade students. Sorry about that. Everybody else is in school on time. Our second vision statement is we will provide a safe environment where every student can grow intellectually, emotionally, socially and physically. In Worthington, you know that one of our main goals is that we want each of our students to be connected with trusted adults and also connected with their peers. So my update in this area really is just that Wednesday evening at our state of the schools, we're going to feature two different, two very different stories on how we're helping to build environments where every student can grow. We want you to be part of that. Which leads me into my next piece. Our vision statement says we're going to provide consistent communication and promote dialogue. Wednesday evening, 7:00 p.m. at Worthington Kilborn High School, we're going to hold our state of the schools. We would love for everyone in the community to come join us. It's going to be a great night to learn about our schools, see student performances and just ridiculously talented students. Engage with all of our district leaders, eat a Worthington cookie and really hopefully walk away with a smile on your face. So again, Wednesday night, 7:00 p.m., Worthington Kilborn High School. We're looking for a really great night. And then our fourth vision statement is we're responsible and transparent with our community resources. Recently, we had enrollment projections completed by Cooperative Strategies. There have been mixed signals in our region when it comes to public school enrollment. With the Intel Project and other development projects throughout central Ohio, we all expect growth in our region. However, the combination of housing prices, interest rates, some of those things have certainly slowed housing turnover in our area, at least in the short term. So from a planning perspective, it's important for us to evaluate what these items may mean for future enrollment numbers. The completed report can be viewed on our district website under the District News section. So it's there right now. It's dense, it's 100-plus pages of data and provides really some very interesting reading about our community. So I'd encourage everyone to spend some time and dig into the report. But on the most basic level, it does project slight growth over the next decade. So it projects increases from our 10,700 students today to about 11,100 to 11,200 students. We've done these reports repeatedly over the last decade and you do see some swings based on what's going on. So everyone is just a projection. So we see growth continuing, but at a much slower pace than we've seen for the last few years. And that might make sense based on our built-out community. So anyway, our district website, under District News, you can view that full completed report.
Thank you, Dr. Bowers. Any questions or comments regarding what Dr. Bowers shared this evening? Okay. Mr. Kusick, the treasurer's report, please.
Thank you, Ms. Hudson. Just a few quick items tonight. The monthly financial report for February was distributed to the board and made available on our website. It is worth mentioning that while this report has always included a status update and a snapshot of our bond construction fund, now that we approved at the last meeting the last two big pieces of that, of that project, that this report makes a little bit more sense to an average user now. And so we'll continue to update that every month, obviously. It's a monthly report. But we're hopeful that it provides a transparent accounting of our construction process. It currently shows that we are in line with the $217 million budget with considerable amount of contingency still remaining for unforeseen as this project gets going or project alternates. Legislatively, the Property Tax Reform Subcommittee is taking a break surrounding the primary next week. We're told that they will come back together in April. OASBO, the Ohio Association of School Business Officials, our association, believes that in April, they will invite school testimony at that meeting. So we're working with that work group to structure how that testimony might look. And then lastly, to my second favorite social worker, Laura Ruffing and her entire team of mental health specialists, happy Social Worker Month.
I love it. Well deserved. Any questions or comments? Thank you, TJ. All right. That brings us to Board Committee Reports and Announcements. Would anyone like to start us off? Jennifer, you want to start?
Okay. Thank you. First, I want to once again congratulate Kelly Davis on her OSBA Star Award. Many of us here were able to go to the dinner that Ohio School Board Association had last week and able to honor Kelly and hear a great student performance and hear Kathy McFarland, who is the Executive Director of OSBA, kind of talk about public education. And she's always really great to listen to. One of the things she talked about was kind of her concerns, concerns going on in public education right now. And they're all things that we're focused on here now and know our concerns and working on, like absenteeism and graduation rates. It was kind of good to have that confirmation of we're all on the right page here. And to honor Kelly, it was a lot of fun. And then the AAPL committee met last week. Yes. Sometime since the last meeting. So that's me and Stephanie with Angie and many of her team members. And we briefly talked about the special ed audit and strategic plan that they've been working on. And those are going to be presented at upcoming board meetings. And then we got to have the fun part and got to do some hands-on activities with the math workshop. And the way we teach math now, how it's all, you know, hands-on and games and we got to play and do that. So it was really great to see what is actually going on in the classroom. So it was a good meeting. Looking forward to whatever the committee brings for the next time we need.
And maybe you can go next because you may have something to add to that.
What she said. And so congratulations, Kelly. We're going to all say it. You just have to sit there and smile. So I went to the OSBA Central Region Conference as well and enjoyed all the presentations as well. And the AAPL update. The only thing I will add is it was really a great opportunity to kind of hear the philosophy behind some of the ways that we're teaching math now, similar to what Jennifer said. But something that stuck out to me and I wrote it in my notes was this idea that, and we say it all the time, but it cannot be overstated, that we're meeting students where they are and then allowing every student to succeed, right? And so for somebody like me who is struggling to help my third-grade daughter do her math because it's not my thing, it was really good to hear that because not everybody learns the same and not everybody comes with the same sets of skills. And even starting in elementary school and carrying throughout, there's a lot of attention being paid to that. And I think that cannot be overstated. And the amount of work that goes into teachers learning how to do that and doing that day in and day out in the classroom cannot be overstated either. So it was really great to see. It was a lot of fun. And I want to, I was excited to see a sneak peek of the strategic plan. I know it's just a small piece of everything that goes on and how we think about what we do in the district. But it's, I'm excited to see how it just kind of gives a little bit of an anchor and a little bit of a foundational piece to help us think about the work that we're doing. So that was really great, too. And then Kelly invited me to join her to see the Worthington Interface Neighbors Presentation of Peace Ambassadors. And I'll let her explain more, but my daughter's in third grade and saw it this year and she came home and was really excited about it earlier in the year. And so I was really excited to be able to see the presentation. And it's such a great opportunity for both the high school kids that are presenting it or doing the interactions and the elementary kids. And they were engaged the whole time. They were in it. They were answering questions and figuring it out. And it was just such a wonderful opportunity for everybody involved. So if you ever get a chance to check it out, I would encourage you to do so.
Excellent. Thank you. Amber, would you like, well, Kelly, do you want, we'll just, yeah, we'll do it that way. That way you can join in and talk about the, we'll piggyback off of each other.
Yes. So I went to the Peace Ambassadors last year at Worthington Hills. And shout out to Worthington Hills. So I just knew I needed to go back. And when it came an opportunity to go to Liberty, for those of you who know who, me, spent, I spent a lot of time there. So it was nice to go back there and I'm glad, thank you, Stephanie, for coming with me. So they have a group of students that come in from Kilborn. And I think they're trying to get some Thomas students as well. So if there are any Thomas students out there that want to join the Peace Ambassadors group, please do so. These were all sophomores that were presenting and they had a huge test after this, but they were thoroughly engaged in this process. And the students that they were presenting to were so excited and polite, right? Like, they were not, they were so excited, but they were like raising their hands and waiting their turn and all the things, all the things that we want our students to do when they're sitting and excited about things. So they did some skits and, you know, the one, you know, each skit had a time where there was a not-so-nice thing going on. And so students were being mean or they were being disrespectful or they weren't being accepting of another student. And so they would ask for feedback from the students. What did you think would have happened? And then the students would give feedback. And then they would say, what do you think would make this better? And then students would give feedback. The students, the third graders, were giving feedback. And so then these high schoolers, right? And so how cool is that? The high schoolers are listening to me and they're taking my feedback and then they're redoing their skit because of something I said. And so then they do it and it's inclusive and they have, they have an acronym, so it's SHINE. So it's Stand Up For Yourself and Others, Hip-Hip-Hooray for Differences, Include, Not Exclude. They have like hand motions that the kids are all doing, New Knowledge, New Friends, and Everyone Is Unique. So just, and then they gave them a little wristband at the end so they really feel connected to those students. Really great. They get into every elementary school. I know that Rob has gone. They mentioned that Rob comes often and I know some of the other team has gone as well. Next year, I said I'm going to have to go to a Thomas feeder school. But they, the last one is in April at Worthington Hills. I think it's April 10th. I wrote it down and then I didn't bring where I wrote it down. But it's in that board calendar that we have on the drive. So if you want to look, April 10th, I believe, is the date at 8:30-ish at Worthington Hills if you want to go to that. So just really a good program. I love the work that they're doing. And then, yes, I went to the spring conference and got a little bored. It was, I was very excited. I really appreciate everyone that was there. That meant, that meant a lot to me to have you guys there with me. There was a brief legislative update. Jennifer, you talked about Dr. McFarland's comments, which were really remarkable. And I sent you all the slides today so that you could see the data that she discussed during that time. And then the new president, Sally Green, also spoke and she talked a lot about collaboration and talked a lot about sharing our stories. And I know that we do a really good job. Obviously, March 13th at 7 o'clock at Kilborn, we're going to be sharing a lot of stories at the state of the school, but we, you know, maybe perhaps we can talk sometime and, or make some suggestions as we see stories that are happening in our district that we can share with OSBA so they can share it out to their broader community. And of course, there were other recognitions. It was great to get awards and see other colleagues from other school boards that I know also get recognized that evening. And that's all I have.
Thanks, Kelly. Amber?
Well, I will echo all the congratulations. I'm sorry that I wasn't able to be there in person. I had fully planned on it and forgot that my daughter had a, I think that was the band concert. We had a whole week of band concerts and choir concerts. And it seems like we got everything out in just one week for the, for the kids. But lots of talent in the district. So I saw lots of great music, lots of great musicians at middle and high school level. So that was a lot of fun. I attended also the academic honors ceremony at Kilborn, was wanting to get over to Thomas, but again, concert that night too. And so wasn't able to make it to Thomas. But it was incredible to sit there and just see how many of our students did meet that 3.5 threshold. Trent was there too. And, you know, just, it's such an achievement. You know, they're juggling so many things personally and extracurricular activities and just to have that GPA and be able to maintain that is really something. So it was a really great celebration. Lots of musical acts there, too. So lots of student talent on display. And then looking through my notes here, so also had the SPAC meeting with Nikki, which is Supplemental Program Advisory Committee. Emily, I wrote that down because I knew that I would not remember that. So that was my first meeting with that group and still kind of trying to get my brain around, you know, what exactly it is that they all do. But it's a collection of, you know, teachers and coaches and the band director for Kilborn, marching band director, was there for Kilborn. And, you know, there's so much that happens behind the scene that we just don't even have any idea to make everything just go smoothly. And that group is kind of, that's how I envision, is, you know, that's sort of how I think of them, is they're the ones that are just quietly working, making sure everyone's shining and doing the hard work in the background. So that was a good meeting and look forward to working more with that group. I think that's all I had.
Excellent. Thanks, Amber. Kelly, I'll start by also congratulating you on the STAR Award. I love the fact, I don't know, I actually looked it up so that I could state it again or have stated correctly. STAR stands for Service, Training, Aptitude and Recognition. And I think it's an example of well-deserved recognition that you are a lifelong learner.
Yeah, absolutely. So I think you guys all hit on the things that we learned during the regional conference. So I will move on just a little bit more on the SPAC. This is my first time serving on SPAC as well. And thank you very much, Emily, for giving us some background information. For those of you who are not familiar with the committee, the committee is charged with the responsibility to review and make recommendations to our superintendent, Dr. Bowers, regarding the supplemental programs available to pupils in the district. So the things in general that we talked about at our last meeting were middle school athletics, in particular, participation, general participation, specifically golf and girls' wrestling and those two programs and our ability to support those programs and whether or not girls' wrestling is something that could be launched at the middle school level. We also talked for the first, I think it was for the first time it had been brought been brought up to the committee, because I know additional conversations will be had, but really looking at assistant coaching numbers and some OCC comparative information. So where do we stand from an assistant coach standpoint to comparable schools within the OCC? And that conversation is one that will be ongoing. In addition to that, I had the privilege of attending the National Honor Society Celebration at Thomas Worthington. We haven't had our academics yet at Thomas. That is one of the benefits, right, of being a parent in this district is that you get to see firsthand, whether it's at the elementary school level and a grandparent and, or at the high school level, the, the programs that spotlight and allow our students to shine in various ways. And that was, that was my report from a committee update. And so I believe that takes us to approval of minutes. And TJ, I'll hand it over to you.
Thank you. Yes, I would like to recommend that the Board of Education approve the minutes from the February 26 meeting as indicated in enclosure E1, please.
So moved. Second. I assume no questions or comments regarding our minutes from the last meeting? We would have shared those before now. So if you please call for the vote.
Mrs. Epling Skinner?
Yes.
Ms. Harless?
Yes.
Mrs. Hudson?
Yes.
Mrs. Best?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. I'd like to recommend that the Board of Education approve the appropriations modifications as contained and listed in your agenda. By way of background, the top part, our general fund transfers from various line items that net out to zero. Somewhat atypical at the bottom is an increase in the food service fund budget. As it stays there, though, this increase is due, is more than offset by higher than anticipated revenue from increasing participation in the program.
Excellent. May I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Would you please, any questions or comments regarding the appropriation modifications? Okay. If you'll please call for the vote.
Ms. Harless?
Yes.
Mrs. Hudson?
Yes.
Mrs. Best?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Epling Skinner?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. I'm going to just provide background for F1 and F2 at the same time because they're similar but slightly different. So every, every year at this time, we begin the budget process. The first part of that process is certifying to the County Budget Commission our tax resolution. And so they, really, the main part of tonight is F2. We are asking, or we are approving, accepting, I guess you could say, the rates and amounts that have been certified by the Budget, Franklin County Budget Commission for tax year 2025. That is part of our 2425 budget. We know those rates over this year will, our property values will change. And so they will ask us to amend those next year. And that's what you're seeing in F1. So this is, we did this last year. We, we approved an initial rate for collection year 24. We had reappraisal. So now you're being asked to amend that. And then we're approving the initial rates for 2025. And we will very likely repeat that process next spring. So item F1, recommend that the Board of Education approve a resolution accepting amended rates and amounts as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the County Auditor for Tax Year 2023, Collection Year 2024, as indicated in enclosure F1.
So moved. Second. Questions or comments?
No, but thank you for that.
I was just, yeah, thank you for the background information. Always helpful.
Do we just want to clarify that when we say amend, it means amend so that we're collecting the same amount roughly?
We are, yeah. So the millage, if you, if you go back and look at what we approved last year, the bond millage was 6.6. It's now 5.7. So because we had reappraisal, that millage dropped. We're collecting roughly the same amount. So very good question. And you are correct. That is, that is why we're doing this process.
Thanks.
Would you please call for the vote?
Mrs. Hudson?
Yes.
Mrs. Best?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Epling Skinner?
Yes.
Ms. Harless?
Yes.
And then if, do you want to read that one?
Yes, I'd like to recommend that the Board approve a resolution accepting the initial rates and amounts as determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the County Auditor for Tax Year 24, Collection Year 2025.
So moved. Second. Any additional questions or comments? Okay. If you'll please call for the vote.
Mrs. Best?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Epling Skinner?
Yes.
Ms. Harless?
Yes.
Mrs. Hudson?
Yes. Thank you. Motion carries. Dr. Bowers?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to recommend that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda. That's items G2 through G9 on your agenda. Items G2 through G9, please.
So moved. Second. Questions or comments? Would you please call for the vote?
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Epling Skinner?
Yes.
Ms. Harless?
Yes.
Mrs. Hudson?
Yes.
Mrs. Best?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Sorry.
No, you're good. I paused.
I'd like to recommend that the Board of Education approve item H1. H1 is the acceptance of the donations listed here on your agenda. H1, please.
So moved. Second. Questions or comments regarding donations? Would you please call for the vote?
Mrs. Epling Skinner?
Yes.
Ms. Harless?
Yes.
Mrs. Hudson?
Yes.
Mrs. Best?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. I'd like to recommend that the Board of Education approve item H2. Item H2 is the attached resolution authorizing 2425 membership in the Ohio High School Athletic Association.
So moved. Second. Questions or comments? If you'll please call for the vote.
Ms. Harless?
Yes.
Mrs. Hudson?
Yes.
Mrs. Best?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Epling Skinner?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. I'd like to recommend that the Board of Education approve item H3. Item H3 is the acceptance of a proposal for the replacement of UNIVENTS at Sutter Park Preschool. So UNIVENTS are the HVAC in that school. And so as part of our bond package, we're part of our general replacement package, we're replacing those at Sutter Park this summer.
So moved. Second. Questions or comments? If you'll please call for the vote.
Mrs. Hudson?
Yes.
Mrs. Best?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Epling Skinner?
Yes.
Ms. Harless?
Yes. Thank you. Motion carries. That brings us to Section I, Request Questions,
Concerns from the Board. And I think we're going to start with a discussion regarding board liaison positions. So in anticipation of this, I did just go ahead and bring up our historical objectives related to these positions, which merely states to build and maintain, like I'll use the city of Worthington as an example, to build and maintain relationships with the city, to allow for collaboration on matters of mutual interest for the benefit of the community. Kelly, do you want to start us out with what you're hoping to, that we walk away with after this discussion?
Yeah. I do think it could be very simple. It could be, you know, just, just what Nikki read. And I just think that we need to be communicating out to the different entities that we are liaisons to. And then we need to know what the expectation is. I did reach out to some other board members and other boards to see how they do their liaison roles. Not very complicated, not very complex. You know, if there's something that comes up during the month, a lot of boards meet monthly, then they report on it at that time. But just so that we can communicate to, like, the city of Worthington, Swim Inc. is another one, as they're going through with the Naterium and just having some collaboration that way and some partnership, not to remove the relationships that are had between our administration and staff with these different entities. I know Emily and Tim are on Swim Inc.'s board, for example. And like, Dr. Bowers will be with the new city manager, Robin Stewart. You know, that collaboration will, you know, this will not supersede that. And this very high level. So high level conversation about how is it working now? Has it been working well so far? You know, are there library programs that you'd like to bring to our attention that maybe we want to discuss or be part of? You know, things like that as you're, as you're looking at the library. And then, of course, we talked a little bit about the liaison for the legislative liaison for OSBA. And then there's the student achievement. A little kind of side note, I'm currently the liaison for the Worthington Education Foundation. And Nikki is the alternate right now. But it has, their meetings are not very easy for my schedule. And they're in the middle of the day, in the middle of the week. And so while I love the Worthington Education Foundation, I think I need to step away from that liaison role. And so as we're talking about that and the responsibilities of that role, too, I am going to ask that maybe someone step into that role, whether Nikki, you as the alternate, step into the liaison role and we find a different alternate. But they are doing some amazing work. So I definitely don't want that connection and that partnership to go away. So that's just a little side note. But looking at just my notes, just, you know, highlights of what's, what's going on, obviously, city of Worthington, city of Columbus are probably, you know, things that stick out a lot. But that, you know, they're all so valuable because all of our, you know, all of our entities are valuable. So does that make sense?
It does. And I, and I think while they're all valuable, obviously, we have different degrees of relationship with them.
Right.
Right? And so in thinking about this, you know, we have two, two schools that are in Perry Township, but none that share a township covered, right? So we obviously are engaged with Perry Township and their police with related to those two schools. And, and I will tell you just from a little bit history standpoint, I remember, and Jennifer, you probably remember this as well, when I joined the board, there were not as many. I think we had city of Worthington and I'm sure we had city of Columbus at the time. No, we didn't? Okay.
We just had Worthington.
Okay. And so it was my recommendation that we, we add them just in case we needed them.
Right.
Right? But not that there's like this, it's not a huge lift. But go on, Jennifer, sorry.
So we talked about the city of Columbus like a long time ago, like when I first got on, but connecting with the right people there was really difficult. So I don't know if, you know, the district can help us connect as the liaison, you know?
Well, now there's an elected liaison. So it's so much easier. So Chris Weish is the elected liaison with our area. So that will be, it's kind of nice that we have it in place, actually.
Definitely changed a lot then.
But again, doesn't circumvent the fact that that main relationship lies with the district and our administration. We are there to, to supplement, but we're not there to circumvent, right? Like, for example, I would never imagine Chris and I sitting down and having a conversation about a new initiative. That conversation should occur between Trent and, and Chris versus through me and, and Chris.
That's where I think it gets a little hairy for me, or a little, not hairy, gray? Gray. Gray's a better area.
I'll take gray over hairy.
Uh, yeah. Because, like, being the backup relationship is kind, is very enigmatic, right? And so then, like, what do we do? Like, we, we have a relationship with Chris just from campaigning. And that's not to undercut anything that you just said. But then, like,
Who's we?
Just, well, I know Amber met him campaigning. I met, you know, we did events together because we campaigned at the same time, just, you know, that way.
Gotcha.
And Kelly knows him, obviously. So I, like, I need a little bit more definition around, like, what we, what the expectation of our roles specific to liaison to the communities is versus what the expectation of Trent or whomever else is meeting. Because I don't want to get in the way. But I also want to make sure that when I'm investing my time with whomever, that it's being invested, you know, we're forging those relationships with the right expectations, that, you know, we're spending our time wisely, that kind of stuff.
Sure. And, and I think it's pretty simple. As Kelly mentioned earlier, they can be pretty simple. And that is, you reach out to the person for whom or the organization, like whoever the designated person is. You let them know that you're available if, if they need something. And you let them know that you'll reach out to them. And then we let our administration take the lead on matters. And if something is brought to us, then we pull in our administration and make sure that we're all aligned. And, or if we hear of something that we need to let our administration know about, right? But other than that, it's...
I guess where I'm going is like, if we want them to speak to the administration, then what is the, what is our value? I'm not, I'm not trying to nitpick. What is our value in saying, reach out to us, right? If we want that direct line of communication to exist?
Yeah. Well, we can say, reach out to our district. And we're here as well if you need something, if you can't reach someone, absolutely. You know, I, I think that, I see this, you know, I see this more as just a, personally, and chime in, please, Jennifer, you know, I think the two of us are the ones who've sat with this the longest, that, you know, most likely being used in situations where things maybe aren't going well, and you need someone else to try to convey a message of, like, here's another way to think about it. They're, they're not used a great deal. It's more there if we need them, which actually, the fact that they're not used a great deal should seem praise to our administration because they manage those relationships and they don't really need our assistance in stepping into helping smooth something over or helping explain a need of the district or something along those lines.
I think, too, it's information gathering. So I, I'm going to pick on Stephanie for, and I'm picking on you because you're the Swim Inc. and Worthington, city of Worthington liaison. And how right now, those things, like the city of Worthington City Council is having a meeting and talking about the pools, for example, and being part of that work group for the pools and gathering that information and just sharing it with us. That in, when I would, when I would be in those work group meetings, for example, I wouldn't say a whole lot, because Vicki was there, too, to represent the district. And so, but I'm gathering information. And everyone's, even in the Worthington Education Foundation, I'm not participating necessarily in the conversations. But there are times when questions come up that are board-like questions that I would be able to answer at that time because I'm there representing, not on behalf of, but kind of representing the board, you know? So it's kind of an information gathering. And if there's something that we feel like there's something going on here in the district that's very high level, that maybe, I don't know why the city of Columbus would need to know much. I mean, they're just so huge. But maybe the library needs to know something that is happening, that we are doing. Something is coming up and we want to make sure that they know about it. The state of the schools, maybe you would reach out to the director of the library and say, hey, personal invitation because we've developed that relationship. I want to, I hope that you know that we're having the state of the schools. I know that the district has reached out to you because I know that they've done that. But that personal invitation just helps build that relationship and partnership. So I think that that's where my perspective is.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Coming from relationship building, partnership.
And information gathering. Yeah. And, and I think it's also helpful to know what it's not, right? There's not an expectation that you go to every meeting or any of their meetings, for that matter. Maybe just have the agenda on your radar or, or listen to all of their meetings, Kelly. You said you've listened to Barry at times.
I really try to listen to Barry's meetings.
And so, so it is absolutely a minor role that we play as board members for, for certain liaison positions. And, and, you know, more time intensive for others. And the, the Worthington Education Foundation is a great example. We're actually listed as co-liaisons, not as alternatives. So I absolutely will stay on. And if someone has the capacity, we can send you, is it the third Wednesday of every month? I'll email out, okay? And then people can circle back and express an interest, but give you, second? Is that what you said?
It's this week, so.
Okay, okay.
It's a Wednesday.
It's a Wednesday. Yeah.
It's rotary time. I don't even know what that is. It's rotary time. What does that mean? Rotary meetings at noon on Wednesdays. And I'm the club administrator. If I miss, it's just.
Yeah. So it's good. So it's good. So we can figure out if, if, you know, if there's, it used to be just one. We changed it to two because Kelly knew going into it that it might be difficult.
Yeah.
So it can stick with one. And my responsibility, like you articulated there, Kelly, is to listen, maybe ask a question if they have something board-related, but really to bring back that information so that we're all informed as to the work that they're doing.
Yeah. And that's a good one, just because they are going, like they just had a retreat and they sent us information regarding that. And they have a meeting that they're going to talk about all that on Wednesday. And so, you know, some are just going to be more information sharing than others. I do think the city of Columbus is tricky because there isn't like how there's Worthington City Council and then you have Robin. Chris doesn't have a Robin. He has his staff, right? And so that could be, that could be a conversation that you and Trent and Chris have to see, how do we want this dynamic to go? And you all can decide how to work that, you know, work that out moving forward and how much...
Yeah. I, I view that very similar, though, to the others, which is his main relationship, Chris's main relationship is with Mr. Cusick and Dr. Bowers. And mine is there as supplemental. So that, you know, like you said, actually, we, we, I'm on his calendar. We meet this month. He is, as you know, a parent in the district. But I like your suggestion. I'll reach out to him and say, just remember, state of the schools is, is on Wednesday. And we have a pretty impressive school that you can, you can see many facets of, than more than just your parent lens, right? With wherever your kids are within the district. So. So why don't I take a first stab of taking this conversation and just putting down some bullet notes, some additional bullets to what I described in the first place? And we can wordsmith it, tweak it at our next meeting, and then hopefully we'll have something that makes all of us feel comfortable as to expectations and those walls. Does that sound good?
Sounds good.
Okay.
Excellent.
Thanks.
Absolutely. Any other requests or questions or concerns? No?
Thank you.
Okay. So that brings us to our calendar. I think we're all aware, our next meeting is April 8th. And we don't have a scheduled presentation at that meeting in large part because we hope we have that meeting. The graphic will allow us to have that meeting that evening. But it's worth giving a, giving a, give it, giving it a try, excuse me. And so obviously, there's, you know, almost a month between now and then. Hopefully, our, everyone in our district has a safe spring break in the meantime. And then we'll, after the 8th, we have a meeting on April 22nd relating to the special education audit. Can, may I ask that you reach out to, I should know how she pronounced her last name? Traster? Tracer, okay. After, I think that, that presentation will probably be very insightful to her as to, yeah, where we're moving in that space. Thank you. I hope that's not overstepping. And then at our May 13th meeting, we'll have the five-year forecast, which we all anxiously await.
It's the highlight of my May.
It is actually. Like, the more you understand it, the more you actually really do look forward to, to hearing where we are and where we're going, what is forecasted. Any questions or comments about our upcoming calendars, our calendar, excuse me, our upcoming meetings? Excellent. If there's no further business then, if I could get a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Would you please call for the vote?
Mrs. Best?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Epling Skinner?
Yes.
Ms. Harless?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Motion carries, and meeting is adjourned. Have a great evening, everyone.